That might be watching the webcast, the live or for an infinite amount of time in the future, I'll have a long YouTube lasts. The first item that we got is apologies for absence.
Jo.
Margaad Adams, Jeff Mills, Matthew Warren, Matt Whittingham. That's it. Callum.
Linda Gaskell.
Linda Gaskell. See.
Yeah, sorry. Right, the rest of us are here and the next item is open forum. And we don't have any members of the public here in person. However, if there are any questions raised on the YouTube chat during the meeting, we'll pick those up at the end and answer them as best we can. Item three is declarations of interest and this is where any councillors have to declare any prejudicial pecuniary interest. In other words, issues where they have a direct financial interest. Are there any? No. Minutes at the last meeting. Item four. Somebody move those as a correct record. Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, we'll move on then to item five, which is environmental schemes and town centre planting. And I'm going to pick up item 10, which is specifically tree planting at Victory Park and other proposals. Sorry, tree planting at Victory Park and other proposals. In terms of environmental schemes, we have completed the new path up at Lefty Park and that's been paid for. Jo, can you remind us what's left in budget?
I do think there's something to check for.
Okay. We, as a town council, previously agreed to do some resurfacing at Victory Park, which was the access track past the children's play area. And memory tells me that there isn't enough in the budget to do that. And there's an outstanding issue in terms of the reinstatement of the potholes, which was done in a fashion by the contractors who took in all the spoil for the junior football world. I don't think that issue has been satisfactorily resolved, so we were unable to proceed with that one. There are some other schemes that we've talked about previously, but I don't think we've got any approval to go ahead with them. So I think it's a case of when we get to the full council meeting in January, if we're not able to go ahead with the resurfacing and, you know, we need to put that back into the following financial year, that would be a case of have we got any schemes that are teed up in order to crack on with them and then we've got more of a budget for the resurfacing job next year. Any comments or questions on that bit?
What's happening with outside gyms?
Okay, well, that was rather parked. There was a working group set up and, no, there was a working group of the town council.
We were waiting for us to say no.
And West Draven have said no twice.
Okay.
I took it that there was going to be some reconsideration whether that proposal went ahead in the form that it was outlined. I'm looking at councillor Tom Whip. Who was on the working group? Jo, Dave, Tom, Chris?
The sports grants, grants that could come towards.
Do they need to reconvene?
Yeah. Okay.
A few people after the post went on Facebook and it got some quite disparaging comments. I got contacted by people saying carry on, it's a really good idea.
I'm only asking for this budget there.
Yes.
If it's one.
Yeah. Tom, are you indicating you're just waving your pen? Okay. Right, so the suggestion is the working group, have a look at that.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's possible to do that for the 12th of January meeting and then we can get forward with whatever decision to get forward is. Yeah? Is that okay? In terms of town centre planting, the outstanding issue, pen's not working now, I don't think, the outstanding issue is in respect of the beds at the back of the town square. And you recall that a couple of years ago, the town council agreed to revamp the three beds at the back. The centre bed was revamped by the Bloom Group. The subsequent contractors' work has meant that there's been quite a lot of disturbance to that, together with the two flanking beds, one at either end. The Bloom Group are looking at a fresh scheme, you know, to utilise what there is in that centre bed and then plant up the two flanking beds at either end. So I don't think there's anything concrete, or in fact, not concrete, but I don't think there's any green proposals as yet. But it may be that by the time we get to the council meeting, or the next round purposes meeting, there's some firm plans that we can agree to or not, as the case may be. I think that's it as far as town centre planting is concerned. So can we move to the tree planting and can I invite councillor Tom Whip?
Question, you know, the Jesus crosses that are Jesus crosses. Do we need to put something in because Pendle haven't done what you asked?
Right, so Jo's asking if you remember, through the Welcome Back Fund, there was funding for four new pole planters, together with the ancillary baskets and planters. And that scheme encompassed re-erecting the four old crosses, which were removed because the bases became corroded. And so the proposal is that they'll be re-erected, but at a lower height, taking into account the big part of the bottom, essentially. And that's all been agreed, both by the town council, by the area committee. When we saw the figures for this at the area committee, I think it was a sum of, was it £501 for the planters? And I thought, by heck, that's a good price for these planters. They cost us eight half moon planters, eight small hanging baskets and eight large hanging baskets involved. And knowing how much these reservoir planters cost, I thought, cracking, cracking here that. Anyway, when I asked about the timescale for the new poles of the old poles that were re-erected, it turned out that only eight of the 24, yeah, eight of the 24 planters have been ordered. And lo and behold, and I don't want to rake over this, but Pendle Council has managed to expend 50% more on this non-existent website, which has taken up all the slack in that budget. So I think there's £87 left, which won't go very far towards paying for the baskets, the reservoir baskets that will be needed as a consequence of the new pole planters and the old pole planters being re-erected. So it's all a bit of a fiasco, to be honest. Well, it's more than a bit of a fiasco, it's a disaster. So Jo is saying, look, if West Draven area committee aren't going to fund the baskets and so on and so forth, would the town council need to pick up the bill for them? My view is we wait to see whether the area committee cover the cost in total. Both Tom and myself have challenged whether they should proceed with the website that they bungled because of the late notification, invitation to businesses, general mishandling of that. And in which case, please can we have this money back and invest it in something different? But at the last meeting, the West Draven area committee were being advised that they probably committed and we can't do anything about it, despite costs having rocketed 50%, without any committee approval or, you know, notification to councillors before it was done. So on that one, I think wait till the next area committee, which will be for the full council meeting.
Yes.
And that if the town council need to consider it, we could pick it up at that point.
We're just thinking about, we'll need time for ordering.
Yeah, I mean, we need them obviously for planting up in spring for display. There's probably time.
We need a week later.
Yeah, if we ordered them in January, or if they were ordered in January, you'd get them in good enough time to do the business. Okay, Tom, can we move on to tree planting? Can you just say where we're at, please?
Yes, please. Okay. I'm not too clear. So we have a scheme for the hedge and the junior hedge fencing. Jo, you applied to a funding source?
Yeah. No, they put too many barriers in the way.
So I think we need to agree to sell and ideally get mortared because planting season ends in February.
March.
So do we get an estimated cost for the planters?
We did, but then when we went to the company, they were insisting on us using these rear paper things that were like twelve.
Jo, Tom's asking about the whips. No, no, Tom came with a specification from the RHS.
Did you?
Yeah. And he detailed it.
Right.
There was home bean, hazel, oh, I forget now.
Yeah.
But we can.
I'm alone.
Go back on that.
But if we want to get it planted this year, I think we need to pay them.
Okay. So have you got any recollection of what the costs were?
No, it was about.
It's a hundred, it's not a lot.
It's not really more than £250, we thought, for the whips.
So, well, worry about the protection because there's loads of rabbits down there.
Yeah, there is. Well, we've got a stock of used spirals and we've got more that we can take off the ones at Blacklife. So there should be about 300 there. We need UKs, we've got UKs from the switch on, so we can reuse them. So potentially, we've actually got all of the protection stuff that we only need.
Okay. So are you seeking approval to purchase the whips? I think, and any ancillary that might be required, you never know what they might be.
Yeah, a bit.
Me?
Yeah, no, a couple of hundred quid for what it is, I don't think it's a lot of money, is it?
Well, you're going down, you said 250, you say 200.
250 pounds then is a lot plus. As long as we're happy that it's, you know, it's not going to escalate anymore, I'm happy for it, it's fine.
Okay.
You know, for us, let's get on with it, let's do it.
Any further comments on that? It's moved and seconded that we asked Jo to order the necessary whips for that mixed native hedge alongside the, well, between the junior football club and the.
Small standing as well. I don't remember what the species was.
I'll look back and look at it.
Rowans?
Rowans, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, the rowans are probably more expensive. Well, not probably, they will be more expensive.
Shall we say up to 500?
Wow.
Yeah, I think that's very conservative.
Yeah.
Starting off at 200.
As in, you know, the front is the way around.
All right, okay.
Generous. Yeah, generous.
Right.
I can see what's left of the budget.
Okay, well, I mean, if necessary, we've got the environmental scheme.
Can you bask in planting budgets to an hour or so?
Okay. Right. Are we all agreed on that?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, Tom, you want to tell us where we're at with woodland truss packs?
Yeah, so we've got woodland truss back there at Tom's Forest. It was a closure of what we thought should.
Not more.
No, not three, no, just four packs and that's what they gave us.
So we've got 105 whips there, which we've got agreement with the football club for some, okay, for some down the side of the back, not the, not stocks back, the line through the rear car park, yeah, through the front there. I'm not sure about the rest of the guy to notice.
My view is, we had the site visit and my view is the 105 will probably, you know, about match the area in question.
Yeah.
So most of the planting area is in the, outside the area that is leased by the football club. It's a mound between the car park and the little beck that runs at the rear of the football club. When we were down on the site visit, we did see one of the people associated with the club and asked about planting on the club side of this little beck and he was okay with that. But we have had a query from other committee members or people to do with the club about just exactly what we were talking about. So I think that needs to be finessed and needs to be finessed before Saturday, which is the revised date for planting. So there is an invitation. We don't want to be too mobile because 105 isn't that many trees and, you know, the area isn't that massive, so we don't want to be on top of each other. But there is an invitation if anybody wants to join us on Saturday morning, I think from 10 o'clock, is it? At the car park to the north of the football club, access off Creamfield Lane or walk through the park, you'd be very welcome. Yeah, okay. And further tree planting proposals in the offering, Tom?
We've been approached by the zero carbon group. We want to start a community orchard and Victory Park has decided not to do it. I mean, I'm not sure if there is enough space at Victory Park. Depending on the scale we want to. Victory Park is majoritively playing pitches. There's not a lot of spare expansive ground for sort of big planting schemes. I've given them a few locations which we could fit them in and they're going to put forward for the January full council to us, the point of consultation for residents around the area.
Okay. Yeah. Right, I mean, I think it's important that we're clear as a town council, you know, about what's proposed and who's doing it. As a town council, we've been quite happy to fund the provision of woodland and plant trees and I see there wouldn't be an issue in terms of planting orchard trees. However, the, it's probably about 10, nine, 10 years ago, the Bloom Group planted a small community orchard at Valley Gardens and unfortunately, none of those trees survived. So I don't know what it is, but I think as soon as the sort of apples or other fruit appearing on the small trees, the, you know, they tend to attract for sort of ripping them off or destroying the branches. Now, hopefully that won't happen in the future, however, that's been the past experience. So it may be that, you know, we've got to be quite canny about where to go and how much risk they're exposed to. So there needs to be that discussion. Chris?
Just on a small technicality on that point, if there is a risk of them, of anybody destroying young trees just to get at immature fruit, whatever, it would be easy enough for somebody, be it the zero carbon group or whoever, just to prove the blossom on the first year or two years or whatever. But I don't know whether it's a problem, as you say, it might prove not to be.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether it's the fact that they're fruit trees that's the issue. The experience at Valley Gardens was that the Bloom Group planted several fruit trees and some other volunteers, it was country holidays, as a sort of workplace thing, they came along and planted quite a lot of standard trees, so, you know, sort of trees that are our sort of size. And all of them were damaged and I don't think there's any survive from either planting scheme to this day. And I mean, my theory is when we plant the whips, they're small, inconspicuous and they're left alone because they're not obvious. And then they sort of grow and they grow, you know, quite quickly into sort of sturdy sort of bushes that, you know, they look after themselves. I mean, some evil wicked ones in amongst like dog roaches that you wouldn't want to tangle with and, you know, sort of black thorn and horse thorn, all that sort of stuff that, you know, they prickly and so they don't get attacked. And they tend to thrive, whereas, you know, the bigger stuff tends to attract nefarious sort of activities. So I think that might be part and parcel of the issue, but it's not the fruit trees, it's the fact that they're sort of standard.
I've been through all of this prehebited, vast experience with them. It's my understanding, I've got contacts with the Saturday night group who have agreed to, maybe not yet, but I said I'd like to fund the trees, I mean, not to, so whether that goes to fruition.
Okay. Yeah, we'll pardon that for a moment. Jo?
Same group are wanting a meeting room, must be that part of the consultation on the 12th of January, but they're not properly phoned, Jack, so they don't have a bank account or anything. I'm all right to let them have a room for an hour.
This is pro bono? Yeah, well, as far as I'm concerned, but I should declare a personal interest in the fact that I am affiliated to that group and I think Tom is as well, I don't know whether anybody else is.
So it's I850.
Yeah?
Shall we say, but they have to come to our table as well?
No. No, but they're very welcome to come in Saturday, but it's not condition of, I'll have a room for now. Yeah, so it's agreed then that we have the discussions with the zero carbon group and that in order to facilitate the progression of that strand, we authorised Jo to have a pro bono. I mean, what we do with other groups is it's a sort of like internal transfer from a grant, but for less than a tenner, it's not worth the paperwork really. Okay, anything further on tree planting from anybody? I'm going to pick it up on item seven, but that's a different issue. Okay. So item six is the events programme, both for the current financial year and the future financial year. And I mean, this is sort of like the more substantive item on the agenda. Unfortunately, we don't have the certainty that we would have wished. Members will be aware that West Draven Together, which is the company that operates the Rainall Centre, which was set up in the notice as every generation company, has bid for four sets of funding from something called the Additional Restriction Grant, which is item eight. So we'll roll item eight into this one, so we'll just confuse Jo even more. What has been bid for is a series of four events during this financial year, which one of the stipulations is that funding has to be used by 31st of March. And the first of those events is the solstice celebration Christmas market that we're planning for the 18th of December. So it's all getting a bit nip and tuck as to whether we'll actually get the funding approval for that before the event is actually happening. And we really can't find out what the timescale for any approval might be, so we're in the dark with that. The planning has been done on the basis of we can slot things in if the funding is approved. However, if the funding isn't approved, then we'll have to do it within the resources available to the town council, which will clearly be at a lower level than we would otherwise wish. And the other consequence of that is that the events budget would be fully utilised, I think. Is that fair to say? Can't see what your expression is. Can't but guess. So, yeah, we're aware where we are.
That's what this one, still a little.
Yes, yeah, yeah, other three.
Three.
Other three. So if we don't get funding, then town council budget is fully utilised and there isn't prospect of doing the planned events in January, February and March. If we do get funding, there will be a requirement for the town council to put things in, the budgets that we've got, so that even if we get the maximum grant for each budget, we'd have to did it. But as long as we get funding for all four, West Draven Together gets funded for all four, we could have. So the other ones are at the end of January, a festival of ice and fire, Game of Thrones reference for any aficionados. Game of Thrones reference for any aficionados. We did think that we could get people suitably attired so that councillors could go about wreaking mayhem with broadswords and, anyway, I'll leave that to one side. You could have dragons. I can see you laughing over there, even though you haven't got your mask on. The other? Real dragons, yeah, they exist, just like unicorns. Another angle that we're exploring is an ice trail, which we have got some prices, which are quite, well, they're a bit astronomical. But, you know, if we.
With that bad.
Pardon? You didn't think with that bad? Well. Yeah, I mean, if, if we, if we, when, if we wanted to go down that, that line, it is possible. But, you know, it would mean that we wouldn't be able to do other things. So we could have an ice trail. The third event would be in February, and that's the Spud Day, which we have talked about before previously as a town council. That would be a celebration of our Spud locomotive and also would be the Horticultural Spuds. That period in February is the traditional Spud seed swapping day. And so we can weave a lot into that. And the thinking there is it's a food festival based about around potatoes. So loads of potato recipes and councillor Ken Hartley says he's got about 200 potato recipes in it from the long-lost and limited potato marketing board. So, you know, there's, tempted to get our teeth into with that one. And then the final event in this thread would be Barnoldswick in Wonderland. And this would be in March. And it's Mad Hatters, Alice Wonderland, Lewis Carroll councillors dressed up as Lewis Carroll characters. Chess, a giant chess on the town square using the, the new flags as a chessboard.
I was saying it was a tea party, tea party square.
No, well, with the tea party, we'd have to find a park square and.
Fill in it.
We'd have sixty. But yeah, yeah, I mean, you get the gist with. Sorry, Joe, I missed that bit.
No, it's all right. Just have some normal chess balls.
All right. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's lots of scope for exciting, entertaining activities during this current financial year. We're going to get the funding. If we don't get the funding, then, you know, you have your cultist celebration and everything goes dark. So.
Like normal.
We will see, we will see. Any questions or comments on that block? No?
Not really. I think we're just in the hands of the funding, aren't we, really?
Yeah, well, I, I do begin to despair, but they are. Right, looking at next year, we do have the, the bare bones, which we discussed previously. So in April, this is next financial year, April, we've got St George's Day on the 23rd of April, which is actually St George's Day itself, which is really good.
What day were you March 12?
Uh, 12th, I think.
About February 19th.
That was the 12th. Um, which actually coincides with. Valentine's Day, something like that. Anyway, we're in next year now, next financial year. So we've got George's Day. May, well, it may would have been Banz on the Square, which is shunted into June. Emma?
Bank holiday shift then shunting into June. The proposal is that we could have Banz on the Square on the 2nd, which is the Thursday. And that keeps us to Sunday in time as well, so it can be shipped back a day. So I say, and that's, I'm just. I think that's kind of, you know, what it's in, that with, with Banz. That same week to do then kind of. So the question was.
Yeah.
We get around the main. Oh, my lord.
Well, I think we, we plan on the basis that, you know, anything, sorry, not anything goes. Just cost the government to do that, don't mean to say that everybody else is going to say. We, we're not having any parties now. If we did have a party, if we did, within the, the regulations.
If we did, but we didn't.
Oh, well, if we, if we were asked about having a party, we would say it was work related and we were just working.
You don't have a head man.
Yeah, yeah, carry a pet. All right. So if you've got a drink in your hand. As long, sorry.
Drink at work.
Good, probably use drink as much as you can.
Well, our solstice event is December the 18th, so that would be a suitable anniversary for the Downing Street.
Okay, so after the, after the event then, we have a knees on.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And it's work related?
Yes.
So that's okay?
Absolutely.
Oh, that's fine then, yeah. Can we move back into next year because like, you know, we're getting a bit, right, so.
Okay, the days that we have a site. On Banz, just about, I'm old book, so apart from, I think the Thursday.
Okay.
Did you manage a site with, with chatters?
Yes, yeah, one of the questions was, that was asked by the Bloom Group and we may have touched on it within this group previously, is given the new configuration of the town square, it would be possible for us to have a wider marquee. At the advantage of the wider marquee going from 12 metre span to 15 metre span is that it would give us more acreage undercover. So in the event of inclement weather or indeed, you know, for the event itself, there would be more covered roof space for punters to, to stand under. However, there, there's some downsides in the, the, I don't want to go too far into technicalities here. The, 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 the advantage of the 12 metre span is we can have half a bay behind the stage, which I know Emma would be delighted if she could have a full bay behind the stage because it is rather cramped. However, if we add two and a half metres at the back of the stage, it means we lose two and a half metres at front of stage. So if we lose two and a half metres at front of the stage, the benefit of the extra span and the extra acreage, it becomes marginal. So, hold on. I couldn't possibly comment. I'm just saying that, that, that the benefit is marginal rather than, I mean, it might be that the stage could be set up halfway down the bay, but then you lose the false gable which.
So basically, I just said, that's fine.
Say again? Well, we've had a site visit. I think it's still, still balanced like that.
The only thing that we meant to ask and drive, because before I didn't mean that, but you know, we were going to try and recruit some staff from there.
Yeah, we, we've got the nucleus of some casual workers. Whether that would need to be developed a bit more, probably yes.
Two of the ones that come from Penney Event Management have bought some of the country votes.
Okay, it, yeah, I mean, what we know what to do is, is lose as army of volunteers. Yeah, and, and there is, you know, there's a tension there because. Yeah, anyway, but we don't want to kill ourselves by sort of overwork, which is, you know, sort of it. So, yeah. Okay. Anything further on Banz on the Square?
We went out to the Bots group about their first day of class. So I'm going to put it out to councillors. So the rest is nice. 15th January.
Hang on a minute. If you're gonna contribute, you have to.
Be, you know, maybe do it after the first day of the, oh, what's that? Just a suggestion for a day, because there's a lot of us there anyway.
So the first aid event is 15th of January. Jody's suggesting, hold on.
From the town council, please contact. What do you know?
Okay, right. So Jody's suggesting that the Bots meet in, filling, pardon?
I do. Please don't do me, I.
Okay, that, let's discuss it outside of anything because it's not necessary here, is it? The other thing that we have agreed as a town council to do is a beacon on the, is it the 2nd of June?
I think it's 4th.
Okay, I've, I've forgotten which date it was, to be honest.
Is it Saturday?
I've no idea.
I think it's 4th.
Right, I, I thought it was on the 2nd. Mick, it's got to do with finances, so you should know. Right.
If it gets out of control, I can help you.
And I'd just love you to get a pump to the top of Wicks.
Yeah, maybe not. However, just leave that with me.
Okay, the.
We've, we've just purchased two new vehicles for more than firefighting and stuff like that. So it might be an opportunity to try it on some different. Haglands, military Haglands. We've rented them for a couple of years now. We'll just put it our own, so.
All right. Could, could I suggest, the last time there was a beacon on, on Wicks, I mean, it was a very much a community inspired event, but there was no official amperature at all. You know, it was a spontaneous combustion, as it were. And it was well done. It was a good blaze. It was safe and, you know, the, the underlying paint was, was protected at all times. So, I mean, I'm very much leaning towards, you know, seeing if the individuals involved in that could be motivated to sort of get to grips with one a little more official, but spontaneous and community led nevertheless. So I know some of the folk involved in that can, can come up and people think that's a good idea. Yeah?
Yeah, 2nd of June, did you say?
Well, yeah.
I'm not sure yet.
I thought it was Saturday.
Right, we've booked it in to, you know, the sort of national hierarchy. So it's got the Queen's approval, so nobody can say anything against it, even though it might be in the middle of the Banz on the Square event. But, you know, imagine we could have a live stream from the top of Wicks to a big stream at, at Banz on the Square. And we could have Crazy World of Martha Brown in Fallow. No, she's, she's shaking her head at me. Sorry. Hold on. It's, it's good, what is wrong with Crazy World of Martha Brown? Give up. Right. Quickly on into June, or later into June. We generally do Valley Gardens Fair, which is in conjunction with Barnoldswick in Bloom. The Bloom Group are wanting to major on barley books this year. And so to have a pub theme running through different events, encouraging caterpillars and all that sort of stuff. So we mentioned barley books, which is what we used to do a few years ago. And, you know, that stage to cook people's imagination. The difficulty in June is having shutted the Banz on the Square forum. Everybody will be exhausted from that. So the Valley Gardens thing might be, you know, more Barnoldswick in Bloom than Town Council if Bloom Group were willing to do it. Yeah? July and into August, barley beat. Yeah? Yeah, September, we mooted the possibility of a kite festival, which we did previously. Yeah, all right.
Put the 10th in or 24th, just because that's the best.
With what day?
Can we decide a day?
Yeah? What day do you want then?
10th or 24th, just not 17th because I think she might feel a bit.
It's not to be windy.
I don't know, probably not.
Well.
What day do we do the meeting house? Still is September.
Right, ideas? I mean, if we, if we run the beach up until the sort of band holiday weekend, not quite sure where that falls, but.
27th.
Okay, okay.
It's, that's the Saturday, so.
Yeah.
Back holidays of 29th.
So if we, if we did kite festival later on in September, that gives more of a break?
24th of September.
Yeah, tentatively. I mean, we got the, whatever they were, the Northern Kite Flyer Group, didn't we? So we don't want to clash with the Letham Cent Sounds one. But, yeah, tentatively 24th, yeah? Tom, you mentioned beating the rounds. Which, do we want to see if Keith Pickle wants to lead it or not?
Could have asked it today, goes to a dance.
Right, well, let's bear in mind for, for asking him next week, yeah? If he's not willing to do it, you know, it's less restricted. But then if he is not willing to do it, we'll have to find other people willing to lead it, such as Tom. He's checking his head now.
I might get two somewhere.
October, sorry.
There'll be a new one. There'll be a new chair on there.
Yeah. Yeah, it is traditional for the, the chairman of the town council to lead the singing of the traditional beating the bands on.
Old thirty vets.
Um.
That's it, so we've narrowed it down.
Well. We, we, we generally have a jolly sing, Tom, and they have to sing for their lungs. The walkers, aren't they? Yeah.
May.
Didn't we? You're muttering away in that corner, aren't you?
It's about air coming out.
Well, no, but, like, picking it up on microphone.
To do.
Okay. What, um, what, if anything, did we have planned for October or tentatively? Um, which takes us into November for the, the, the switch on. And. Could I suggest that we pause at that point, having sort of got a tentative programme that lasts for twelve months? And, uh, see what happens with, uh, these events, if they happen in the next three months? To see whether any of them are worth repeating? Yeah?
Yeah.
Um, in terms of the, uh, events that we've just outlined. Can we agree to give authority to Joe to take any necessary action in that respect? So if, if we book in, um, you know, the kite group, they may require a deposit, um, uh, switch on. One of the things that we'd like to do is, um, buy up all the sales stock, uh, lights, battery operated lights.
How many shops are going to let me know when they go up to fifty percent, because I've dragged around all shops fine.
Yeah, so, well, we're actually going to divide the north of England into sectors. With councillors allocated a sector to go to every.
They'll be like, where are you working today?
Yeah, Poundland, is it Poundland? Pound stretcher, so, you know, everybody would have to put the pound stretchers in their sector to hoover up all the, the lights, as long as they're not white.
No, we don't mind white, they didn't mind white, did you?
Okay.
Is there not some central wholesaler that will, no?
China.
China, I'm not, I thought, I thought the backs came off and the middle bits came out. I was a bit dubious about safety then.
We, we. We do, okay, with the, the ones from Pound stretcher?
No, I think we had four forty, which is an absolute record, and then when we got to front now, we actually repaired them, but I think bits out of one forty minute clip. So the last few kids could actually have them.
Okay, anything? Yes, we know.
It were well good.
Um, so what forcing is that we give Joe authority to, to get on and do?
I'm not going to buy them willingly, I'll only buy them to go for.
Well, I mean, we've got budget and we've got to operate within that budget. But it makes sense if, if we can get stuff at fifty percent, then we get it, yeah? Okay, um, anything further on those events? No? Right, can we move on then? Um, item seven, Platinum Jubilee Fund, Queen's Platinum Jubilee Fund. And, uh, currently this is, is part to some extent, Tom? Go on. Oh, sorry, Tom, yes. Joe, do you want to report the position with the sound desk?
When we came to do Remembering Sunday, it became very obvious that our sound desk has gone walkabout. It was, there was a box in the cupboard that I assumed was the sound desk, because it was borrowed or something, and someone said they'd put it back. And when I've gone in the set box, the box contained a TV monitor.
Okay.
Which is what I thought was, I thought the sound desk was in that box and this TV monitor's been there all the time, which is also ours. But we don't think we've got it back.
No, so, um, Jodie's reporting the loss presumed theft of the, the sound desk, which I can't remember how much it was.
I think it was about two hundred pounds.
Yeah, we started looking, uh, for the sound desk when we did that small event with, um. The presentation of the checks from the mayor's charity, uh, Mayor Ess's charity fund. And, um, we couldn't find it then, but we didn't have much time, but we've looked exhaustively. We've emptied the storeroom here, gone through everything, not there. The storeroom at the City Hall, uh, has been gone through, not there. So we're quite confident that it is not in the ownership or in the possession, should I say, of the town council. And, um, we're doing an event on the eighteenth where we need a decent sound desk. Um, the switch on, we managed with Tom's sort of like two channel ginky toy. But we weren't able to amplify the brass band, so, you know, apart from people stood near the front, could hear the brass band. Um, so we do need one. And Tom, can you report what we've come up with?
Yeah, um, I, uh, did research on what the sort of best quality sound des are. Um, and, uh, I care across all my hair, my.
Sixteen, Tom.
About sixteen, um, um, sixteen channel one. Um, which is of a spec without the noise.
Three hundred and something. Well. Four hundred including V eighty.
Four hundred and eighty, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then in addition to that, I really think if we want this one to stay in our possession and to be.
I think get agreement on getting the sound desk for a start, Tom.
We should get a answer to go in.
Yeah.
In addition.
Yeah, I, I was going to say this, Tom, I, I'm happy to support it, but if, if we have equipment of a value as a, as a council, we should make sure it's well cased. And locked so that we can keep it somewhere secure. I know we've had the discussion about cases that, when we're doing the town square stuff, like with the trees and stuff like that, but if we need some cases to protect it. And I mean, protect it as in to stop it walking, then it's, it's a no brainer for me that, you know, if we're going to buy something of value, then let's buy the proper case for it existing so we can lock it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, agree with that. Okay, so first of all, we need to note the fact that, um, the previous sound desk has gone. And that needs to be reported to the full council and, um, not off the asset register. Are we agreeing as a committee, are we able to purchase in a fresh one?
Yeah.
At a cost of four hundred pounds including VAT? Yeah?
Yep.
And then thirdly, uh, Tom and I think Mick are suggesting that we should get a proper case for public care.
Definitely.
Yeah? Is that agreed as well?
Yeah.
Yeah? All in favour, just to confirm, thank you very much. Right, thanks for picking up on that, Tom. Um. Platinum Jubilee Fund. Uh, this is. A, a fund that we were notified about, uh, within the last couple of weeks. It's for bids of up to fifty thousand pounds for, uh. Uh, activities, not one-off events, which, um, would demonstrate some sort of pivotal change. Or sort of. Uh, structure or something, um, to commemorate the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Um, there will only be seventy schemes that are approved for funding across the whole of the UK. The deadline for submissions is next week, fifteenth of December, I think. And the application window will close when they've got seven hundred applications in. So. There's very little chance of getting it approved. And if you don't get your bidding quickly, then, uh, you won't even get an opportunity to get considered. Um, so it, it's all a bit of a punt and, and, you know, I'm accept that please to go into it. However, um, I, I did start writing, uh, an application. And, um, the basis of the application is inspiring horizons. And it revolves around Lecliff Park and creating a, a viewpoint or viewpoints. Which would, um, allow people to see the inspiring horizon that there is, uh, from there. Now, uh, anybody that I mentioned it to within the town council have said, oh, yes, a, a jubilee tower. Um, uh, you know, a structure that, you know, would be this monument for the Platinum Jubilee. Um, and I'm thinking, well, fifty thousand don't cut much mustard with a tower this day and age. Um, so whether it could be a tower is, is another matter. But the concept is to have something that would be fully accessible, including to people with visual impairments. And although, you know, we'd have to go through the, the, the detail, in broad terms, it would be something that would incorporate tactile surfaces. So that people who can't see the view would be able to feel the view with a, um, a, a tactile topography. And, um, that can be done, and, you know, whether we can do it as part of this, I don't know. And it would fit into the, um, called sculptures, so it, it'd be a sculpture in its own right. The other possibilities are to use, uh, a large lens to sort of incorporate within a, a dry stone wall. So that you'd be looking through a lens at the far distant, uh, skyline. Um, um, another possibility is a, a frame, so that you're actually framing the view, all that sort of stuff. So that, that would be sort of like, um, physical structure or structures that, um, would, would fit into the sort of monument commemorative sort of angle. And then the other strand to it is having, um, a centipede arboretum. So that you're planting something that will be there for generations, based on the center trees, the Platinum Jubilee. Um, together with woodland planting on a wide basis. And that would all be about taking the long view of those in horizons. In terms of climate change and alerting people to climate change and acting to mitigate, um, the climate crisis. And really raising awareness of all that sort of stuff. So that's, a lot of that is written up and certainly a draw of the note to you, aren't there? Yeah. In terms of, uh, the funding, if we got fifty thousand, I don't think that that would be anywhere near sufficient. So. Tentatively, I would be asking if the town council could tip in thirty thousand. So this would be next year. Um. We could do it if we wanted to. We would probably only find out about, uh, whether we were successful in April, which is after we've done our budgeting and things like that. So we could duck and dive a bit, we could have a sum in the budget, um, and if this didn't come about, that could go into environmental schemes or something like that. But, sorry, Chris, so, but if we were to put a bid in, we need to do it like now, can't wait for the next council meeting. And, um, to, to be honest, the energy that, uh, I was putting into the Platinum Jubilee Fund application. As the last couple of days has gone into the additional restrictions for funding application bids. So it's been parked for a little bit. So I'm seeking approval to, to, you know, put the town council's name against it. And to, you know, sort of earmark thirty thousand pounds to put into it as well. But the concept would be to get the industrialists, the companies, individuals involved in actually. De- developing, designing, uh, delivery, the, the sort of structures and getting everybody hands on with the tree planting and, and everything else. Chris?
Do we have to put in a plan for what we want before the applica-, or with the application?
Yes, however, uh, there's a part of the criteria is involving people in developing the ideas. So you can't put in absolutely, this is what we're going to do X Y Z. Because you're expected to involve people in joint plans, so there's a bit of a tension between the two, those two elements.
So just an outline plan?
It, yeah, it's tentative, um, I think, you know, it's obviously about inspiring horizons. And it's about climate change, climate, climate, climate crisis. It's about that, um, wildlife and woodland, um, but it's about the commemorative monumental sculptural structures. That, that would be part of it as well. I mean, in my head, of course. Yeah. Whether that's correct. So it, 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 you know, it, it ties together quite well on paper.
So you're looking at something firstly, the, the, the arboretum side and a, a, um, an architectural structure as well?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. Um, the arboretum, I mean, there's a cost in terms of its future maintenance. But I don't see that as being the, the major financial cost. Um, I, I think if you're talking about structures and accessible structures, uh, impressive structures. Then you're looking at a significant amount of money there. And, um, I, I think ultimately the success of that would be whether you could get businesses, um, uh, and patrons. Involved in putting into it. And, you know, that's hopefully to be found, but not something that we can guarantee. Further contributions? Have a brown beer, yeah? Are you not inspired by this, this vision for wonderful, um, additions to Lecliff Park? Tom?
Just sharing that Lindsay's not here. She's been asking for a tower at Lecliff Park like the last, for how many years?
Indeed.
Good caper the tower, I could go mub.
Yeah, you could keep an eye on it from, from your window, couldn't you?
From my house?
Yeah. You want to.
We're talking of.
I told you what it's.
Scary.
When they got the, um, the company contacted us for the, for the mast on, like, I didn't think, you know, we could convince the normal tower that we could fly.
Yeah.
I have to say, if they, it.
Oh, well, I'm going to Jodie first, isn't it?
I'm sorry, yes, go on.
Jodie?
Reeds decking, when you said about tactile brands, the rails of the decking to match the. That's what he's doing, what he made out of stone.
Well, no, I'm not sure. Not, not sure it's in stone. We were think, we were thinking bronze actually, but. We were think, we were thinking bronze actually, but. But yeah, I mean, the all these sort of, you know, sort of details need to be, need to be looked at. Um, Chris?
That's what I was gonna say, that there's, I I've seen some things on, well, particularly seaside sites. Um, where you've got effectively a curved wall, where the 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 surface reflects the 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 horizon ahead.
Yeah.
There's one at Morecambe that identifies each hill in the.
Well, it'll be flat.
And you stand in the middle and 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 look at it. So you have the tactile aspect as well.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
Nothing too tall to fall off like a tower.
Well, or suitably protected.
Hmm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Was that a go for it? Yeah, all right. So would somebody else propose something, you know, that we do go ahead? I don't wanna do it from the chair. Tom?
I'll propose that we make a bid for, um, Platinum Jubilee Fund to, uh, a project at Lecliff Park. It's five.
Okay, and a request to the full council that we, um, allocate thirty thousand pounds in the event of a successful bid. Yeah. That's moved and set in those in favour of the project. Thank you very much. Um, hopefully I'll crack on with that tomorrow. Um, item eight, uh, I think we roll that into the events programme. You know where we're going with that. Um, technically we're prepared together. Um. Item nine is the rail track path on the town green and, um. Oh, we did intend to email the scheme round and unfortunately, events of all the tenuous. Um, essentially, again, the town council did discuss this previously. There's a, um, Pendle Council engineers have drawn up a, uh, a scheme. In conjunction with the approved scheme from the area committee. For widening the existing path across the town green from Fermi Avenue to Craven Side. In conjunction with that, they've priced up the, uh, concept. Of creating a track bed style, I think Tom's probably got it. Um, a track bed style path that would be a sort of flattened S. So it, you know, it's like railway curves. And that would come from a fresh opening on Wellhouse Road immediately, exactly opposite the, um, War Memorial. And then it would sinuously, uh, link onto the path that goes dangling across the town green. The path itself would be in, um, in the the form of, uh, sleepers. With aggregate in between the sleepers and in the centre, it would be bound aggregate. So, um, it would look like stone, it would be stone, but that stone would be a a firm surface. That you could, um, uh, go over. And then the edges of it. Um, would be loose aggregate which would be planted in so that you've got the form of a track bed. With appropriate planting on either side. And then, um. You could have cotton steel rails set into the sleeper. It's not proud, but. I'd be pretty proud if, you know, it's sort of safe to do so. But cotton steel rails, um. That would sort of have the form of a track bed. So it would be a structure, a sculpture. And a planting scheme that would commemorate the railway and the fact that. Uh, what you have there is the old railway siding and as part of the thing, you'd have a. A, uh, an interpretation board showing people what it used to be. So that the railway heritage could be celebrated. Now. Uh, the estimate of cost is fifteen thousand pounds. And, um, the area committee are already paying for nine thousand pounds, is it? For the widening of the footpath. So we don't think we could push them to put in further funding into this path as well. And so the area committee referred the funding of the rail track path to the town council. And it's my suggestion that, um, either the town council or perhaps the Blue Group. Or a combination of the two, look at whether we can get, um, a grant from external sources. Um, see whether we can fund it that way. So that's the ask basically. Can we look at getting grant funding to allow this track bed being implemented? Tom?
Yes.
I know. It's very difficult actually reading people's eyes. In a meeting, I I sort of look at people's faces and I'm trying to gauge their reaction. And it it very, very, very blank. I mean, to be honest, I'd rather be on Zoom because I can see, I can see people's. Yeah, Joe's steaming up.
I know, I can see, I can see that, but I can't see anybody else.
Yeah. Anyway, that's by the vibe. So what do people think?
Yeah. I think it's a great idea, didn't it? And I listened to area committee and I saw how hard you fought to get something from them and, you know. Yeah, painful as though it was, but no, I agree. It's, you know, it's part of the local heritage, isn't it, that that we represent something like that? And I think, you know, it's a perfect location. I think it'd be great.
Good, thank you. Any further contribution? So. Pardon? No, I think I think the Spud Day would be too soon, but it'd be lovely to go. We started thinking about these things, both Spud Day and this sort of rail track thing. For the, um, hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the arrival of the rail, which was eighth of February eighteen seventy one. So it was the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of last year, but obviously lockdown overtook everything. No, it was, sorry, it was the anniversary this year, but we were thinking about it last year where it all just got shown. Did somebody else indicate over here? Tom?
Hurry, go to the camera.
Okay. Uh, it, what organisation is that then? Gone over the kind blue, give it a whirl. John, do you think Kirsty would be able to assist with giving us some pointers?
I can ask.
Yeah, okay. Right, are we are we content? Um, is anybody not happy with this and wants to knock it on the head? No? Yeah, so is it move then that we, you know, sort of. Between us and the the Blue Group, put something limited to what we can get? Yeah, lovely. Thank you very much. Um, item ten, we've already picked up at, uh, an earlier item. So nothing remains, uh, but for me to thank people for coming along unless there are any questions, um, open for.
One person, this is very.
All right, that's very good. Well, can I thank everybody very much for coming along? Can I, uh, wish everyone very best wishes for the season? And, um.
I'm expecting one to turn on ninety. Joking.
Hope, hope that those that can, um, are able to lend a hand with the the event on the eighteenth. And, um, just before closing, mention that I think it's the weekend of the. Eighth and ninth that we'll be taking the Christmas trees down. And, um, as ever, uh, we would love as many people as possible to to help out with that joyful activity. It's not very joyful actually, cause like, um, you know, it's all a bit dark and gloomy when we finish. But it's a job that has to be done and the more, the merrier. And, you know, as I say, the more hands make life work. So thank you very, very much and, um, thanks for this. I declare the meeting closed. Safe journey and good luck. Hmm, thank you.
That was a bit true.
Hang on now. Are we, are we off, Tom? Very good. Right, closing case myself then.